Okay, sophomore junior's in.
He's had an AARP membership for more than 10 years, right?
All right, all right.
Okay, as chairman of the school board, who is running this tonight? What was the final decision?
Okay, Madam Freshman. You know, Mrs. Strauss is more senior than I am, so just remember.
I just need to know who's calling on who.
I'm running.
Thank you.
I'm doing it. Okay, with that, I call this work session to order. We have several board members busy grabbing their food. Mr. Smith, we have two topics.
Yes, we do.
Correct?
Yes.
Could you tell us what they are?
Our first topic is the third quarter budget review. Lee Burden, our new Assistant Superintendent for Financial Services, she presented our third quarter budget review at Thursday's school board meeting. We'll have an opportunity to answer board questions about the third quarter. And we also had some questions from a few board members about a few of our programs that we'll be able to answer this evening. We will then have a brief update on the state revenue impact for the budget. And then we will roll into, after this, we'll roll into strategic plans. So we plan to have a good hour of discussion around these two budget topics.
And for the third quarter review, the board is scheduled to vote on that at the next meeting, correct? Next Tuesday?
Yes.
Next Thursday?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Continue on.
Good evening. As Mr. Smith said, the third quarter budget review did not have a lot of changes in it. You know, a couple hundred thousand, revenue adjustment and expenditures of the same level in the operating fund, some slight changes in the other funds except for the bond construction, which recognized the bond referendums for those projects, and then I think 1.6 million for the grant fund. But you did have a couple of questions at the last meeting. One of the questions was about the ACE program and what the status of that is currently, the adult and community education. Recently, we met with the ACE administrators to discuss their program. As you know, it's currently not self-supporting and is expected to need an operating fund supplement of about 600,000. The operating fund already provides a supplement of 235,000 to meet the required ESOL match for the ESOL program in adult ed. You may also know that the Auditor General is currently reviewing the ACE program, and that review audit will include benchmarking to regional and national adult ed programs, participation rates, fees, pupil teacher ratios, and administrative overhead. And that audit is expected to be completed in May. So once that is completed, staff will regroup and make decisions on changes to be made to move closer to a self-supporting program in the future.
Any questions from any board members? Okay, Mrs. Schultz?
So I feel it's like deja vu all over again, my Yogi Bear moment. And let's see. Marty, I don't know if you were in this position. Dr. Brabran, you definitely weren't in this position because this is the previous board where we had this discussion in depth and had ACE, it's on, and had ACE brought to the table and almost word for word, which is, it's almost eerie that you say, you know, bring them to the table and have them hold to account. Our mission is K-12. And at the time, the conversation was that if you want to offer X, and X is a loss, a loss leader, and Y is your money maker, you need to do, you know, five Y to two X in order to make up the difference. And I'm really disappointed because I felt like for maybe one or two years after that, we were making progress, and this is a definite, definite reversal of the accountability of ACE to be self-funding. And I'm all for doing whatever we need to do to get the match, but when we have other unmet needs in K-12, to look at a sort of a, is it triple, is it triple the amount of the subsidy that they need in order to be, did you say 600 and?
They need 600,000, 235,000 is what is currently in the budget as the ESOL grant match.
But the 600 is inclusive of the 235?
No, it is not.
It's another 600.
It would be a total of 835.
Yeah. So I'll just do an early signaling. I am, I have a major, major problem with this. I think there needs to be a deep dive as to what's going on. I don't think we can necessarily wait. I appreciate the fact that Ms. Coe is looking at that, but you know, there's going to have to be, I think, a girding of the loins, as it were.
Well, we, I mean, the intention when we met with the ACE program managers was that it wouldn't make sense for us to duplicate the efforts of the Auditor General because, of course, the questions, you know, the finance people were asking were, you know, what's your participation rates? What are your pupil teacher ratio? What do the national and regional benchmarks look like for adult ed programs? What's the overhead like? You know, where, which lines of business are self-supporting, which aren't self-supporting?
We did, we did all of this four years, I think it was four years ago, if I recall, where in the second, it was either four or five years ago. I think it was four years ago. And so to be right back in the same thicket and actually in a worse off position than we were headed in the right direction, so yes, we could, we could get to the point where we wait for, you know, the Auditor General to finish, or we say no. We say, I'm sorry, no, we're not going to give you another 600,000. Figure it out. I mean, I know that's tough, but we may, we may be in the position to say no.
Well, that's certainly something that they indicated that they're looking at, that they may indeed have to make reductions to make the program self-supporting. So I think they're, they're prepared to do that. They have a couple of vacancies right now that they're holding, just in case that's needed. So yeah, they're, it's on everybody's radar.
Okay, I have two other board members, Mr. McElveen and, okay.
Lee, thank you for bringing that and answering the question that I raised at the board table. I think the, Ms. Schultz makes some good points. The reason I raised the question at the board table is because my representative to the ACE Committee met with me recently and asked if I was aware of the situation, and I said, no, I was not aware of the situation. So I'm, I do think it's important to bring it to the board at this time in the calendar year and in our budget cycle. I am grateful to Ms. Coe for leading the audit on this shop. My advocacy would be slightly different from Ms. Schultz. I do think it would be good for us to get the results of that audit before making any drastic decisions, but certainly any decisions that are in the works and led by staff, you know, I think that's certainly prudent as well. So thank you, and I think going forward, I'm hopeful the board will receive another report on this. I'm not, I'll leave that up to the chair or the superintendent when to bring that to us, but we need more discussion on this.
Okay, Kishkamara?
I look forward to the audit report. I really want to know kind of why they're not meeting that target and what would have to be done to make those reductions.
And I might add that in our discussion with staff, they are working diligently. They understand that there are issues here. They've been working very closely with the Budget Office. Budget Office created a very useful tool for the ACE program to use to track hours, to track certain classes and courses that are used more often or registered for more often. And so I think that with this first year of the tool, we hope to see some changes, but additionally, they are looking to make changes if necessary.
Talia Palczak?
Yes, thank you. And I think I'll agree with some of my colleagues. Well, I think it's important for us to see that information. In addition, I would like to see, I think we need to make it clear that even though it's called adult and community education, it's quite a percentage of their programming is targeted to students, whether it's summer program, behind the wheel, after-school language programming. And I also believe, in the past at least, they've been in charge of some registration for other programs. So if that's still the case, I think it would be important for us to see that role that they play.
Yes, certainly.
Thank you.
And they are, they're involved with registration for summer programs and other programs. And part of the plan is looking at ways that we might be able to have ACE possibly be that 13th year for some of our students who are looking to go directly into the world of work.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
So I agree with where everybody's concerns are, and I do remember, as Ms. Schultz pointed out, that this was even during the time when Peter Noonan was in charge of instructional services. So we're really going back quite a ways to win the board. It had the conversation about becoming self-sufficient or self-sustaining. I guess my initial thought is while we can all be waiting and wondering what the audit report might reveal, I would hope that whoever has the ultimate sort of oversight and supervision of ACE would at least be able to speak at a very high level, what's different this year? I mean, what? Yeah, I'm asking Marty, I mean, and even Scott, I mean, are you, so you all are coming to us and saying, oh, we're kind of a little worried here, we might have another 600,000 in unexpected shortfall, but as you all know with any business, a supervisor or manager can't say, we're losing money, we're hemorrhaging money, I don't know why. I mean, there should be at least some initial sense of what's made this year different and why.
So I'll let, Mr. Moon?
Yes.
And I'll let Sloan maybe supply some additional detail. I'm just going to say this. I was on leadership team in 2009. 2009, and ACE was being discussed about overages and school board subsidies. It's been 10 years. We're going to solve this one once and for all. I don't have it yet. I don't, again, like many things, I didn't know it on day one of arriving. It's appeared. ACE is something that has been an issue that we've got to get right, and we're going to. We've started to have the discussion with the folks. Sloan may be able to provide a few other insights, but I've shared with Lee and Marty, we can't keep each year putting money into programs beyond what we budgeted at this kind of rate. We can't, and it's not just been a one-year thing. This has been a structural issue for years and years. There's a lot of good that they do. Now, let's make sure we understand that. I understand the value. I was here for 25 years, but we've got to figure out a way to have a product that we can offer, but we have to have effectiveness and be sure we're offering in a way that meets its budget constraints. I don't know, Mr., Dr. Presidio, did you want to share a few things?
I agree with a lot of the comments by Dr. Brabran, but there are a few things that I think are important in terms of understanding the history and the context of the program. So I'm just going to give you about a minute on that, and then I'll tell you some of the things that we've been doing over the last couple of years to try to stabilize the ACE Fund. First, we do have a school board advisory committee, and they report each year to the board. And I think each year that I've been here, they've reported about the structural deficit in the ACE Fund. And the reason for that is, is the year before I came here, which was really kind of starting it, you know, to really see the impact of the Great Recession on the budget and FCPS, we removed as a school division 1.7 million dollars from the ACE budget that was used to pay for administrative overhead. When we did that as a school system, we then became entirely self-supporting as a program. We asked ACE to run and generate revenue, and the only money that we put into the ACE program is the $235,000 match, okay? We're struggling to try to figure out in the K-12 space how to run a for-profit entity when it's really difficult to try to figure out, are there even national models to do that? As of yet, because ACE was audited back in the mid-2000s, we've not identified another program similar to ACE that is able to do that. Even when you look at like Parks and Rec, the administrative overhead, the indirect costs are paid for by the county. The courses that they run in terms of the instructors have to be self-supporting. So we're able to cover our indirect costs, but we've not been able to cover our indirect and our direct costs. After that year of the budget reduction in FY 2010, we eliminated 54 positions out of the ACE staff program. So we've done a lot to reduce the overhead costs over the years. Over the last two years, and this year in particular, we've taken additional cuts and reductions in staff. We've held any positions open to realize salary lapse savings and have not rehired to fill those positions. We've raised tuition by 6%, and we've worked really hard with financial services to try to develop a model, a business model, that would be able to allow us to run profitably. We're clearly not there yet. We need to figure out if we can get there, as Dr. Brabran said, but I don't want the board to think that there's an easy answer on how to do this. We're still struggling to figure out what that looks like. We're looking for models anywhere where, you know, we could learn from those practices. And we've been working really, really hard to stabilize the fund. As Ms. Palczak said, and Ms. Schultz is right, I mean, this is a community program, it's running a deficit. It may be something that the board may decide that we can't afford to do anymore, and that's a completely legitimate and important conversation for the board to have. But I do want to make sure that the board understands the context, the history. This is a program that's been in the community since 1955. It serves over 20,000 community members in terms of community members that take courses, and it does serve K-12 students as well. So obviously predominantly it's serving community members, but there are K-12 students that access some of the programs and services. So again, we could talk a lot more and go into a lot more detail. I think the audit is critically important. I definitely appreciate the, you know, the timeliness and the need for the information, but that objective deep dive and comparison and benchmarks to other programs nationally, I think is going to be really important to help the board really make some difficult and informed decisions about what we want to do with the program.
So, Mr. Moon, I just want to close by saying that, you know, my son, my youngest, benefited from behind the wheel, and it was an extremely positive experience compared to when we did it with a private company for my older two boys. So, I mean, there are programs without question. I know that many of us have talked for years that we care very much about our ESOL, adult ESOL especially. Those are things that make us a stronger community. So, Dr. Presidio, I appreciate you, you know, trying to really bring a wider lens to the conversation. I just, I know that sometimes we get mailers to my house, and I've thought, why am I getting this? I mean, because it can be expensive, I mean, you're getting them. So those were things where I, as a board member, I thought, well, I won't be too worried because I know they're self-sustaining. So, you know, this is a little concerning, but the main thing is, I think we have to look at where the programs have high demand in the community and continue to safeguard and ensure those are there, ones where we know it's an important service, but for ones where it's a real loss leader, you know, hopefully the audit's going to be able to help us really discern what that is.
Okay, we have about five minutes left for the dispersion of the budget discussion, but I have Karen Corbett Sanders next.
Quickly on ACE, and then I would like to talk about the IDEA grants and the federal funding. On ACE, I would hope that if we are looking at ACE, and I would welcome, I do welcome the input from the audit, the Auditor General, we might be looking at partnering and finding other ways of making sure that our community has these services, but they don't necessarily have to be provided by us. And so I would encourage that we can have conversations, or we should be having conversations with Northern Virginia Community College, which offers some of these courses as well. And the importance is making sure there is access to these courses. It's not who provides them. And so I would just think that we need to look at being more creative and using the overall assets of Fairfax County and Northern Virginia. Regarding IDEA and other federal funds, I see that we have 8,000 more than expected for a parent resource center grant. I would love, not for today, but at some point, to have an analysis of what is at risk given the current budget proposals of cutting various funding lines at the federal level and how that will impact us next year with our budget. And in particular, Title I, Title II funds, as well as any IDEA funds and Impact Aid funds, because those are, you know, I know that we don't have a huge proportion of our budget dependent on federal funding, but we do, in real dollars, it is significant. Is that possible?
That is possible, and we actually have some information on Impact Aid because that was a question from the board meeting, so you want to roll right into Impact Aid?
We have a few other board members.
Certainly.
All right. Ms. Kofex?
We're talking about other budgetary things over here as well. Just echoing what my colleagues have said, thank you, Dr. Presidio, for, again, giving us that historical perspective that some of us have forgotten, but I do think that was a crucial time when we took away the funding, we took away the monies, and, you know, we're trying to make it a sustaining, self-sustaining fund. That was a severe blow to that program. I, along with my colleagues who are advocating, let's wait to see what the audit reveals. I think there are programs there which are, as Ms. McLaughlin said, you know, the driver's training, the ESOL programming for those kids in their 13th year, some of those are very much in line with what a K through 12 system does and needs to do for its student body. So, you know, I think we just need to look for this and see where the audit brings us and, because I think it, and, you know, Ms. Corbett Sanders also had a good point about, can we partner with someone else in the community to do that? So I think all these things are good, they're all on the table, and let's wait to see what the results of the audit are. And following on the heels of Ms. Corbett Sanders, I think also, I too, you know, when Ms. Corbett Sanders and I went down to DC on a rainy weekend in February, and we, you know, did the rounds with the, our senators and congressmen from this area, and, you know, it was interesting, one of the congressmen we talked to very much was, you know, always, always wanting us to be very prudent, as we should be with our budget dollars, and I, Ms. Corbett Sanders and I both said to him, well, if the federal government would give us what they needed, particularly in IDEA, we wouldn't have to have arguments with anyone in the county about funding sources. So I think for me, what she's suggesting is extremely important for us to understand because we forget that. I mean, even going down there at that moment, I was kind of just reacquainting myself of the fact that, you know, we're supposed to be getting 40% from IDEA and we get 10.8%. So I think as a board, I think it's extremely important that we understand what we're currently getting, and if there are, you know, there's all those rumors out there that these funds are happening and these changes are coming. So I think that will be very important. I completely agree with what Ms. Corbett Sanders said. If we can have an analysis of that, even at that point in time, you know, this is where we are, this is what we're hearing, this may or may never happen.
Just real quickly respond to that?
Just one second. Any other board member who hasn't spoken yet, except me? I'm going to be the last one after I do all the go-bags. So let me, let Mrs. Schultz first, and then Karen Corbett Sanders next.
My first question is, when is this audit supposed to be finished?
In May.
So after we pass the budget?
Before. We don't, we don't know the exact date, but it's slated to come in May. We're hoping that it comes before the budget.
So not in time, probably not in time to do the budget. I mean, that's what I'm hearing. Look, I'll throw, I'll throw the flag down now. I'll bet you we're not going to have enough information to make a decision in time to pass the budget, unless we direct that the work be finished in time. Because what I'm hearing is everybody's saying, oh, let's just wait until we get the audit, and then we're going to have to have a work session, and we're going to have to have information presented to us and have a discussion about what the impact is, and by that point, it'll be too late, and we'll been asked to put in a 355% overage to the commitment to fund ACE at what we were previously committed. 355%. Think about what other line items we have that are not sustainable at a 355% level. And, you know, we say that, let's just have, you know, look to partner in the community, and I think that's a great idea, but we already do. It's called private industry. We don't need ACE to provide student driver exams. There's lots of companies, including one run by former or existing current police officers. And there's lots of opportunities out there for people to access these things. And are we in the business of subsidizing with taxpayer dollars, loss leaders, for things that ACE is offering? And I posit, this is actually, this is not actually that complicated. For the things that they're making money on and doing well on, you do more of that, and for the things that you're not doing well on, you either don't offer those anymore or you do a lot less. So do you happen to know, Dr. Presidio, you happened to mention the percentage of overhead that the Parks, that the Board of Supervisors covers for the Parks Department? Do you happen to have either a percentage of the total budget or the amount of what that overhead is?
Not offhand, but I'd be happy to get that to you very soon.
I think that would be good to help us understand because to go from 235,000 to 835,000 is a dramatic change. And I thought I recalled last year, it was only 400,000, which is the differential between 400,000 and 235, so we're talking 165,000 additional, and now we're at 835. Something else has happened, which means they're either offering courses that no one's signing up for, therefore become very, very costly, and they have overhead that is way out of control, or they're somehow offering things that, you know, are costing us more to offer than they're bringing in. That is not sustainable. In the words of Brian Hill, this is not sustainable.
Okay.
It was 553 last year, I just wanted to clarify. We had the numbers.
And 553 was inclusive of the 235?
In addition to the 235.
Okay, Karen Corbett Sanders?
Just a suggestion, going back to the federal funds, I think it's actually imperative that we start producing our budget documentation to show, not, show what they fund us, but also show what they owe us. And, yeah, so, but we need to do it on every one of these so that by law, they're expected to cover 40% of IDEA and 50% of Impact Aid. And so part of that is making the public aware that Fairfax County is doing more than its share. We're happy to do it, but you need, we need to make it very clear We're happy to do it, but you need, we need to make it very clear that by the federal government not doing their part, it puts pressure on other programs.
Corbett Sanders, just quickly, if you recall, at the Thursday meeting, I would like us to show it actually in red. I'd like the red with the minus in the quarterly budget presentations. I'd like us to, because I think that that does elevate, look, we're not, we're not getting, and I think Ms. Darnett Kofax brought that up too, we're not getting the incoming.
Even close.
And here, oh, by the way, here it is, slightly larger font, red.
Yeah, no.
With a minus sign.
It's critical, because there is a misunderstanding about the generosity of this community in supporting these programs. And, you know, I can't tell you how frustrating it is when I hear, well, you're not doing enough, you're not doing your part, and it's like, oh, yeah, we are, we're doing our part and more, and we're happy to do it because we value these services.
Any other board member? Mrs. Strauss.
Just a quick question, under the Grants and Self-Supporting Program, it looks as though we actually have experienced an increase in industry and foundation grants. Quite a bit, $691,000, which is nice. What page this is? It's page 10. I'm reading that right? Under Receipts, Grants.
Yes, you're correct with that.
Right, okay. Well, that's some good news.
Alice, is that the Education Foundation?
I think it is. It is?
Most of it is coming from Educause for the Assessment for Learning, as well as the Claude Moore Foundation.
Great, okay, good job, thank you.
Anybody else? I'll just say a couple of, you know, a couple of things. Overall budget for ACE program is about $9 million, $9 million. And overall, overall budget of $9 million, and we are about $600,000 in deficit. And I would love to know what the county government does in terms of supporting overhead, whether percentage, I want to be able to compare that versus our deficit, whether that is what, and see, go from there. And I have heard that the ACE Committee, ESOD advisory committee meeting, the discussion that committee members are having with the staff members, that, that $235,000 we put in for adult, you know, ESOL program, the level of our support for the program has been flat for how many years?
Over five.
What?
I think it's, I have to look at it, but I think over five.
Over five, you know, they were talking about all their costs were going up, their salaries and benefit cost all going up. So overall, you know, from their perspective, what you are putting in, the value of what you have been putting in, has been decreasing. So that was one concern, they were raising it. But I look forward to an opportunity to have a further discussion about this.
Mr. Men, can I just go back in your first one, and Marty Lee, Alice, you may have already understood it, but because I didn't, I want to just be sure our staff does. Your first question was, what's the ratio of what the county does for, when?
Because county was just supporting the overhead for park authority board.
Okay, right, the overhead. For the parks.
Right, programs pay for itself, but county governments pay for the overhead.
Right.
Which we don't, what we put in, we support our programs. I want to see.
Yeah, you wanted to see what, that's what I wanted you to be able to.
Yeah, comparison of the percentage.
Comparison, you got that, okay. I just want to make sure.
So with that, this portion of the discussion is done, we'll go into the next topic.
So we still have just a few questions.
Oh, you have a few more questions to answer.
From the, from the school board meeting, so we do want to get into questions two and three. We had some questions around the burn rate for class size, and we have some questions about Impact Aid that we're going to answer.
Yeah, the Impact Aid question was that we provide the amount of funding we received, and if there are any concerns, and what's still owed to us. For fiscal '18 year-to-date, we've received 2.4 million against a budget of 3.2 million, but we expect to receive the remainder by the end of the year. The Impact Aid funds come in in multiple payments, so we don't have a concern there for fiscal '18. There are four kinds of Impact Aid funding. We're eligible for basic support and payments for disabled students. The federal budget does, or recent updates, indicate that a reduction to the basic support is being considered as much as 44%. And if implemented, of course, that would most certainly impact FCPS. The FY '19 Impact Aid budget is also 3.2 million, so a 44% cut would be a loss of 1.4 million.
And in comparison to what they owe us for, based on federal legislation, it's substantially more than that.
Yes.
That's what I'm thinking we need to actually show.
Hey, those were the figures I asked for on Thursday, is what is it that's outstanding from the federal government that we're not getting remunerated for?
You mean literally, like, we budgeted 3.2, and we've only received 2.4, so 900,000 is outstanding? Or do you mean, similar to IDEA, that it's supposed to be 40%, and it's only 10.8?
Yes.
That I don't know.
Well, last year, it was 23 million that we should have gotten, and if you're talking about now getting max 3 million, that's a 20 million delta.
Is that what I asked?
I don't think, I don't think people really understood what we were really looking for versus, we kind of just got satisfied of, oh, this is all they're giving us, but that's.
But the real issue is, is what would be the delta if we actually got the federal funding that we're supposed to get? How, what better of a financial position would we be in? And I think that's the delta that we have to show, that we are impaired fiscally by not getting what we're supposed to be getting in terms of those federal grants.
We'll get that for you. It was a misinterpretation of the question, so we can get that for you.
Okay, I have Karen Schumacher, will you raise your hand? Okay, any, yes, Mrs. Strauss.
Going back on the Impact Aid, particularly aid for children who are entitled to special education services, I guess when we go back in and answer that, that would be very helpful, and that would be based on the needs particularly of our children on post. And I don't know if we actually have that in, pardon? And the Key Center. So that it's not only what the legislation actually lays out as having been promised, but what is also the need? Because we know many families will come to us, because we know we provide services, whether the federal government reimburses us or not. And we must provide those services to the children. So I think that would give us the full outlook. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else on this one? If not, what's next? Mr. Smith.
We have one more question to answer, oh, two more, go ahead.
The third question was about class size, the staffing reserve, and the burn rate. In January, as part of the premier workforce presentation to the school board, there was a table included in the PowerPoint, which provided how many classes fell in the class size categories by grade level, as well as the staffing reserve balance. And this was as of November of 2017. At that time, we had seven grades one through three class sizes that exceeded the max of 29, and 57 grades four through six class sizes that exceeded the max of 29. Those class sizes were a result of limited classroom space, a desire to avoid disruption of an existing class culture, a school's curriculum requirements and/or teacher vacancies. The staffing reserve was depleted completely by November of 2017. And the primary reason for allocation was higher actual enrollment than anticipated and to address class size. All in all, 469 staffing reserve positions were budgeted, including the 20 that was allocated by the school board to address class size issues, and 92.5 positions were returned due to lower enrollment or distribution different than what was expected. So a total of 561.5 positions were available, and they were all used in the first five months of the year for an average burn rate of about 110 positions. But you should know that we, you know, monitor enrollment and distribution throughout the summer, and then we allocate additional staff if warranted. We make every attempt to make those changes prior to the first day of school, so that it's less disruptive. But all of the staffing reserve was depleted by November.
Okay, I have Mrs. Schultz first, and then Ms. Palchak.
So where is that information, do we not have that information posted?
We don't have that information posted, but we can post it. It was also, though, posted as part of the Goal Three Report in January.
Okay, so my, or even a link to that would have been helpful. So if I understand correctly, and I was trying to listen and process at the same time, there were 92 positions returned for lower-than-expected enrollment, and there were 20 allocated for, to defray, hold on, to defray overage on our class size policy. So that's, you know, effectively 112 positions that were, could have been available, but what, where did those 92 positions wind up? Because, and what's the deficit now? How many classrooms are over the class size allotment now?
I mean, class size changes every single day, because students come, students go, so we do not recalculate class size monthly. We calculate it typically once, a couple times a year.
Okay, that didn't, I mean, I appreciate that, but that didn't, that doesn't tell me how many classrooms we have that are over our class size limit.
I'm looking for that figure right now, Ms. Schultz, about where we were.
I don't need it today, but in general, do, is it five? Is it 50? Is it 500? Is it 100? Is it, I mean, there's a reasonable average over the time, you know, there was a demarcation point probably in October, at which we said, okay, you are over, and then allotted those 20 spots, and as soon as those 20 spots were gone, we went.
We did.
Oh, well.
We did, Ms. Schultz, and we ran.
Let's, I mean, as I shared on Monday, I just want to say again, we're here to serve the board, work with the board with the questions, so we're not trying to, Chase has the information, we'll be glad to share it, and if there's something we didn't misinterpret it or didn't get, we can get, so that we can help the board make good decisions around these issues.
When we ran the data in the fall for the Goal Three Report, there were 64 classes in grades one through six that were 30 students or above, and that's in the, that's in Goal Three. I don't have an updated chart for you, you can find that. Now, the caveat that I don't have is that some of those classes, the principals, in collaboration with their region, determined that it was in the best interest of the school to keep those classes at 30 or above. And so it was not in all circumstances that we ran out of positions to reduce those class sizes, as much as it was, for one reason or another, the school principal decided that it was better for their community to keep that class at 30, rather, or 31, rather than to split it.
So I guess I'm a little bit bothered by the fact that we took the temperature on this one time back in the fall, and haven't taken the temperature on it since. Because we made this a policy, and if we don't have a handle as a board, or the superintendent or the leadership team, on how many classrooms are at the upper edge, which does things like, certainly going to impact student achievement and teacher workload and all kinds of things, that you have classes that are at the very top, and then we have these 92 positions that were returned, but only 20 allocated, yet there were 64 classrooms. So if I take 20 positions from the 64, right off the bat, did the other 44 get some of those 92 returned positions? Or, I mean, because if there's 92 returned, that's 112, then we should have been able to buy all those classes down right away, because as far as I can tell, 64 is less than 112.
You're asking kind of specific circumstance questions in some regard, Ms. Schultz, and so I don't, I don't know the exact answer to that. And it's not that we're necessarily taking the temperature at once and never coming back to it, but for most of our principals in our schools, there comes a point in the year where they don't want to break classes up. And so they get to a point where they've developed a class culture, they've developed a grade level culture, and so even if we have a staff member that comes available, or they get that 30th kid that puts them over, and would add them to the list, they say, you know what, give us an IA, give us some different support, which we're willing to do, they don't want at that point distraction to break up the class, or they don't have room, right?
I just think it's, I just think it's reasonable that we're halfway through the school year for us to have an understanding, when we went through all of this effort in the first place to make this policy, allocate money, there's 92 positions that were returned, at what point are we, you know, are they able to get, and, you know, Ms. Loveclass brought up an excellent point, is class sizes fluctuate? So if classes get bigger over the course of the year, and we're kind of at our, like, you know, the apex of class sizes, you know, kind of February, March is like our top enrollment, is there a well to which they can go to get an IA, to get some support? I mean, we talk a lot about parent liaison this, and janitor that, and what, I'm like, look, we're talking about in the classroom, and the maximum-sized classrooms, and I don't know, I just, I feel like this is just a little bit, I mean, I felt like we've asked the question, and maybe it's just a little cavalier in the.
Well, that's not the intent. What I'd say, being, being in this discussion for seven months, you guys, a year or a couple years ago, created these class size, you know, what was the direction to staff about how often to take the temperature, what to share? If we didn't have clarity around that, we can create the clarity so that you can see where those dollars are going. And I do think we've got to figure out, I mean, we're burning through the reserve at a pretty good clip, and we're out by November. Now, there's a good point that Chase says, I was a principal, listen, I didn't really want to move, really after the first couple of weeks and back to school night, parents don't want at any level to have the students move, they don't. So really, past November, there really isn't always, but, but I do think we've got to figure out a way, the state takes the temperature, I think, Marty, correct me if I'm wrong, or Mary Beth, in September, September 30th, they do our membership date, right, Chase? And then March 30th, so we have two temperature checks with the state. So that could be the beginning of a benchmark for what we do for you guys, and then maybe we create a third one in between. But I do think we've got to figure out, we spent a lot of money on this, we need to really make sure, I think even at Monday's work session, needs-based staffing, general ed staffing, then the class size caps, how it all gets distributed, and is it going for the intended effect that the board had it? I think, I think we can take a deeper dive on that.
And where these are, and where they are.
Wait, that's in the appendix as well of Goal Three, it has a breakdown of every school, and what positions they got, and who got them, and who, well, it's this year, yes, it's this year, it's for this year, so since November, I don't have it updated, but it shows it in.
Well, since November, if we were down in November, Chase, we barely really probably even distributing things since that.
Okay, now I'm going to exert some control over how the discussion is going. I have two board members on my list. I have Ms. Palchak, Mrs. McLaughlin, any other board members, so that I could put you on the list?
Janie.
Mrs. Strauss, I have Ms. Palchak next.
Thank you. And my question's kind of following this thread of conversation. So A, if we could get that list again, that would be wonderful. B, and I know in conversations with my colleague Ms. Evans, we were starting to look at what the impact has been. And so my questions would be, A, how many of those schools received additional staffing from the reserve because they have isolated AAP classrooms? I believe that was some of those, it was because they could not, they were not combined, and they received funding. So how many of those classrooms were due to that? In addition, it seems that, I know we had at least one school that had to, a Title I school, that had to return staffing, because according to the formula, they had lost enrollment. So, and, in effect, some of their classrooms, I believe. I believe upper grade elementary, went a few students above 25. So I would like to have the information as well, if we can, of how many of our Title I elementary classrooms have more than 25 students in them? Of our latest numbers, figures, if that's November, that's fine. And to be able to compare that to the list of where we're, where we're looking at school. Because, yes, we wanted to cap our class sizes. But it seems that possibly, and we're trying to get more information on this, some of the negative effect has been that our classrooms with high need are not getting staffing and are sometimes losing and going above our hoped-for limit for those classes. So, so we're kind of balancing the two. And would like to get more information on that and perhaps of how HR is working with schools when staffing needs change. So I don't know how we can get that, Dr. Ramey, so that we can have a better, oh, sorry, a better look as a board of how those decisions are made with the staffing that we have, the reserve.
Sure, we can, we can provide that, that information. And you mentioned something, and I'm just seeking some clarity.
Sure, sorry.
Because the limits that we've been working with are what's in the class size reg. So at certain grade levels, 27, and then our upper grade level is 29. And so when, when you say the level that the board had, I can't remember what words you used exactly.
That's okay.
Is higher than the board would desire, I don't know what that is. And so we can go with that 25. But there will be some higher than that because we've been using the guidance that's already there, which is that 27 number for classes one through three and then 29 for classes four through six. Now, we do have classes one through three over 27, but they all have IAs in them. And so they're within what our cap, what our class size regs are. So just.
And so for those classrooms, we're adding IA. And then for some of the classrooms that are going above 30, are we, you said some, we've added an IA. But, but our first step is generally to split the class.
If a class is at 30 or above, we offer a teacher as long as there is a classroom available to put the class in. So that's our first. If the school comes out and says, no, we don't want us with the class, yes, we offer an IA.
I just want to say, you know, I want to dive into this more. I know you all as a board did. There's a lot of interesting things in play here to talk about. It's, it's an important conversation the board needs to have. We're going to do more. You're asking the questions that will help us shape what a future presentation will be. We have a lot of formulas overlaid. Then we have principals that say, oh, I don't want this, I want that. And we're going to have to figure out how to try to pull it all together and let you get, what's the whole effect for the school? The class size caps, the needs-based staffing, general ed staffing, Title I staffing, and how to pull all that together in a way that's meaningful for the board to be able to review. We're going to work on that.
That would be great. Because if there's anything that's regulation versus what the school's able to do with HR, I think it would be good for the board to know that. Thank you.
Okay, I have Mrs. McLaughlin to be followed by Mrs. Strauss.
I want to thank Ms. Palchek for asking several of the questions that, you know, I was wondering myself with all this. And I also appreciate Mr. Ramey bringing up something that I've even experienced as a parent, which is there reaches a point at times when families will say, I don't want my child disrupted. And I'm, I'm happy that accommodations like an IA really allow for more of that continuity once the school year. Ms. Schultz, you and I, many of us, we all talk about the importance of research and data. But I just know even anecdotally from my, my youngest son's experience, who's now a senior. He had about 35 kids in his AAP class from third grade up through sixth grade. And he has really benefited from a grade education K through 12. And so while we know that smaller class size is optimal, I think we want to make sure as board members that we do also help our families to understand that, you know, class size is a piece of it. But when we sometimes have larger class size, it doesn't automatically mean that it's going to be a detrimental learning experience. So much goes into it. And, and I will just say this, I am so thankful to live in a community that tends to be very proactive. And we, you know, we always talk about being able to, you know, the coalition of the silence, those who may not have the voice and how important it is for us then to look out for those communities when we're not hearing their voice. But certainly, for the most part, I think our families have done a good job that if they are worried and they don't feel they're being heard by their principals about a class size issue, we hear it. And for the most part, I will say, at least in the Braddock District, you know, I just feel like our principals are doing a good job working with the teachers. And, and that part, I, I think is most important. As long as our families say that whatever the teachers and the principals are doing to manage it, that's a great example that the system knows how to take guidelines coming from the board, take guidelines from research, but then handle things in a nuanced way. That said, advocacy groups like Class Size Counts have enabled us to know that when they feel like as a system, we haven't been working at this with a very sensitive approach, we've needed their voices to it. So I think overall, I mean, Ms. Schultz, I don't know if you're, you're aware of or hearing things that are more than just in isolated areas, if this is a more pervasive issue we've had. But I haven't gotten that feedback, but I certainly care about it. I mean, especially at the countywide level.
Are you done? Okay, Mrs. Strauss.
I think that as we make final decisions in May on the budget for next year, clearly making sure that we leave enough positions in the staffing reserve because we reduced some of the positions from the staffing reserve when we solved the budget last year in May. And we perhaps took more out than we should have. But I think in preparation for making the best decisions possible, I know that projected enrollment growth, we worked very hard on that and we buy in large, are usually within about 1% or less.
Yes?
Much less than that. It can vary from school to school. And we certainly get the enrollment updates every month by the end of the month. And for many schools, there is no change in enrollment. And you can see at grade level by grade level. There are some schools that will experience some growth in January, February. So clearly, sort of those macro numbers of how much growth we expect, what parts of the county do we think we will see some increases in January and February? And then as school board members, do not rob from the staffing reserve come May because I know staff, in staff's effort to give us the best information possible on enrollment, I don't want to undercut that projection where we end up taking resources out of those buckets where staff has said, I think you need those positions. So we need to be careful as well. Thanks.
Okay, what's the next question we are dealing with?
And the last question before we go into the budget update. You had lots of questions.
Just want to alert my colleagues that we are about 30 minutes behind.
Yeah, Mr. Moon, I would just add one comment. Ms. McLaughlin brought up the coalition of the silence. I think we're going to need to bring out the COTS tonight.
Okay, all right.
The last question was concerning the breakfast grants. Because one of the changes in the third quarter was recognition of a grant for Share Air Strength, which provides startup funds to increase student participation in the school breakfast program. About $7,500 is allocated to each of the 34 elementary schools that are participating. All of the Share Air Strength grant is being used for kitchen equipment, reach-in refrigeration, mobile warmers and mobile coolers to provide for the added program components. It's a three-year grant. The 34 schools receiving the grant funds are providing breakfast in the classroom. And the participation in the breakfast in the classroom program ranges from 22% to 89% with an average of 62%. And compared to the traditional breakfast participation, which is an average of 35%. And we can provide a list of schools if that's needed. The free and reduced eligible rates of this group range from 50% to 90%. The breakfast in the classroom is at no charge to students or staff. And the meals are packed in coolers and delivered to the classrooms so that students and staff can eat in a familiar and comfortable environment.
Any board member to comment on?
I would just love, I would love the list if we could have it. And I assume since it's cooler, they're cold breakfasts.
My understanding is the equipment funds were spent on mobile warmers and a mobile cooler. So sometimes I guess it's cold and sometimes I guess it's hot.
And do you know, as we look at expansion, I know I have a group that's hoping to help fund it in a middle school. Do you know if we're using the same model? Or we can ask Mr. Taylor for that information. Okay.
We can get that information for you.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
This is just kind of a cursory question. So if it, people don't have the answer to it, it's okay. But I was visiting one of my elementary schools, maybe about a year or so ago. Mr. McLaughlin, this will probably be particularly of interest for you. I couldn't believe what was being served for the breakfast. It was so much sugar food. And I asked about it in the cafeteria. And, you know, some of the food service people were saying, well, it's, you know, we want to get the kids being willing to eat. But it was like packaged cinnamon rolls. It was sug, like the portable cereal bowls, but it was sugar cereals. It was like the apple juice. I mean, just, there was a lot of sugar. And I thought that is, we know it's just not healthy for kids to consume all that kind of sugar. So I would just say, since it got brought up tonight, if we could just have Rodney Taylor look and see what are we doing? Because, I mean, teachers, we talk about hyperactivity concerns at the elementary school level. You load kids up with, you know, that artificial sugar. I mean, yeah. So anyway, it's so important when I think about, you know, how we want kids to be successful in the classroom. And I'm so thankful to live in a county and, and, and in a country that is trying to get breakfast for our children. But this trade-off sometimes is saying, well, we want to make sure they eat it. Well, some of this stuff is just, nobody should be eating that starting today.
We can provide an update for you on that. We'll talk to Rodney and see what's going on with breakfast and the nutritional value.
Yeah, and, and a Braybrand briefing is fine.
Anybody else on this one? If not, this portion of work session is adjourned except for the next steps. Could you post the next steps, Madam Clark? Okay, if you could increase the fund size to 125% at least. Okay, better. Board members, please take a look at the next steps posted above. And I'm going to give you a couple of minutes to take a look. And then I will start from the one at the top and then go down.
Can we add where?
So we'll do, we'll do from the top. So just to take some notes of the languages and exactly what you're looking for. All right, we'll start from the top. Number one, KKG, does that capture? Okay, I'm sorry. Yes, okay. Okay, we'll just see, we'll just, with that, raise your hand if you could support that. Provide the information to show why FCPA is not meeting target, okay?
Just ask, how is this different than the waiting for the audit? But can we get this information without the audit? Which was sort of.
I'm asking specific questions.
Okay, that's Karen Kishkama's language. If you could support that, raise your hand, please. Okay, number two is from the other Karen. Does that capture what you're asking for?
Because I'm wondering if we want to combine it with item four.
Item four? What would be the delta if you actually got the federal funding division?
So it's, this is the obligation of the federal government to fund. That's what four is. And this is what they actually fund. And this is what is likely to go away if the budget gets adopted.
Ms. Correscentis, I'm going to give you an opportunity to craft a clean sentence for number two. By combining two.
Okay, what I would suggest is we take four and we add it above to two. So what would be the delta to which we are entitled to under federal law, period?
What would be the delta to which we are entitled?
No, leave that if we got the federal funding to which we are entitled to under the law.
Under the law. And then, and then next sentence remains?
So it's, secondly, provide an analysis.
Secondly, provide analysis.
Of what is at risk given the current federal budget.
And the rest of them stays?
Yeah.
Okay. Board members, take a look at that one. Number two.
Bless you. Thank you.
Okay. All right, those who are in favor of that, raise your hand. Okay, there goes number three, Mrs. Schultz. Does that capture what you're asking for?
I mean, you understand that I'm talking in comparison to their total. So, I mean, you know, what they're not funding, what they are funding, what their overhead. Yeah.
Okay, with that understanding, those who can support that request, raise your hand. Okay, thank you. So number four is from Ms. Palchek. How HR is working with the schools' staffing is changing. Is that the language you want, you wanted?
Sure, it's broad, but I think as long as staff understands so that we can look at it. Thank you.
Okay. And I hope board members all understand what Ms. Palchek understands on this one. And with that understanding, let's see whether we have enough hands to raise support. Support that, okay, number four. Number five is again from Ms. Palchek.
Right, so number five should be providing breakfast in the classroom? I believe that's the name of the program. And then if we could also get, is it called the second chance? Breakfast, is it second chance breakfast? Okay.
List of schools providing free and reduced breakfast in the classroom and second chance breakfast. With that, all those who can support this, raise your hand. Okay, number six is from Mrs. McLaughlin. Does that capture what you're asking for?
No, what I want, what I wanted was for Dr. Braybrand to update the board on what food is being served during the breakfast.
Can you ask for like a nutritional analysis of, of what's being served as opposed to just sugar?
Yeah, yeah, I think that's a good way of putting it. What food is being served and the nutritional content? Does that make sense?
Nutritional overview. To look at things like sugar.
So superintendent of the board on what food is being served and nutritional overview in schools that provide breakfast. In schools that provide breakfast.
Another component, such as if, you know, give us a plan on improving the nutritional.
Yes, I mean, that, yes. I mean, yes, the goal was that, you know, first of all, we get an update on what food is actually being served in the nutritional overview as well as any potential recommended changes. And then, yeah, to improve the quality.
Always to improve, not to go the other direction. Okay, Ms. Mc, so Mrs. McLaughlin, does that capture what you're asking?
Yes, please.
Okay, with that understanding, all those who can support that, raise your hand. Okay? All right, thank you so much. Any other next step missing? If not, we'll take a three-minute break and go into the next one. We are about 40 minutes behind. behind.